Call to order, the June 13th, 2016, Latrobe City Council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
At this time, I ask that we have a moment of silence to ask for guidance, to give thanks, or to just quietly relax. Roll call, Ms. Buck.
Mr. Martell?
Here.
Mr. Murtha?
Here.
Mrs. Vogel, Crager?
Here.
Mr. Forge?
Here.
Mr. Boe Merritt?
Here.
Ms. Beasley?
Here.
Mayor Wob, here. And six percent.
May I have approval of the minutes from the May 9th, 2016 meeting?
Madam Mayor, I move the minutes of the May 9th, 2016 meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to any time.
Thank you, Mr. Murtha. May I have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Martell. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have approval of the fiscal department reports and the paid bills for the month of May 2016?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions?
Ms. Buck, or anything, if anything, out of the budget.
No, not aware of it.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have our citizens' request portion of the meeting, items that are related to the agenda. So if you have any questions or concerns or things you want to discuss, items related to the agenda, please go to the microphone, state your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three or five minutes. We will have a section at the end of the meeting to talk about anything else that's on your mind, but right now, it's just agenda items. Sir?
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Smallhook. I live 121 West Tacoma Avenue in the city of Latrobe. And I'm here to voice my opposition to amending Chapter 58 of the code. And what we're dealing with there is permitting chickens and bees in residential areas of the city. I find this very detrimental for our neighborhoods, and I would hope that council would not approve such an amendment to this ordinance. I thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeanette Wolf. I'm here both as an individual and also representing the Westmoreland County Beekeepers' My concern as an individual is, I am a licensed beekeeper. I have bees within the city limits of Latrobe. And my concern with the proposed ordinance is what provisions are made to protect the interests of those of us who are already keeping bees within the city and doing it with no problems. As a representative of the beekeepers' organization, what I would really like to ask is that you get input from beekeepers before passing this. A lot of what's in the ordinance is really good stuff, and it's common sense stuff, but it all focuses on what's good for the city, and nothing is focusing on what's good for the beekeepers and the bees. Bees can be very successfully kept in town. I mean, I've had my bees in town for years, and I don't think anyone except my next-door neighbors, even though they're there, and certainly no one has any complaints about them, they're no problem. But the ordinance is very restrictive in the conditions that we can keep them, and it can be much broader. I mean, bees can be successfully raised on rooftops, and they do it in Pittsburgh routinely with no problems. So we would just ask that we could have some input into this ordinance, and I think probably make it much better for everyone concerned, the bees and the beekeepers as well as the city. I don't think that anyone needs to be at odds over it because there's no reason why it should be.
I don't think there was any at odds over it. I mean, I think the ordinance always had information in there that allowed it, correct, Zach?
For chickens.
For chickens.
And there was nothing that prohibited?
Nothing that prohibited bees in the ordinance. And we're fortunate to have Zach here, who actually has done a lot of research on all of this. So we're certainly interested in everything you have to say, and we can discuss it further as we go.
Yeah, one of the things I'm concerned with, you know, I don't sell honey. I have mine strictly for my family and friends, but the ordinance seems to imply that if you sell honey, that your home and any building on your property can be inspected at any time for any reason. And I would question that, particularly when you're already licensed and inspected by the state. Why does the city have access to your home? Because you sell honey? When you can't be selling it anyway without already having going through an inspection.
Yeah, I did some research, and then I talked to Zach. As far as the selling of honey and all that, that falls under federal standards, which we would have no control over. That falls under federal government because honey has the possibility for a botulism. It just hasn't, and that's why federal government wants to regulate it for the selling of honey.
Essentially, in a nutshell, all I'm asking is that possibly you would give beekeepers' organizations the opportunity to have some input into this ordinance before it's passed.
Okay, thank you.
I'm John Montresco. I am a resident of Latrobe, I live at 844 Main Street, and I've been keeping bees since before World War II. And I've had bees in Latrobe for over 25 or 30 years. Anne Paul was kind enough to help me read it. My eyes aren't too good. With each passing paragraph that I read, I got a little more nervous. This is not Latrobe, what I'm reading here. And there was very little seeming perception about what bees do, and that people have to take courses in order to start. And one of the things that bees do is they swarm, and they do it for a little apparent reason, except that in the springtime, when the honey crop is great, they grow rapidly and then leave the hive. And a beekeeper, a new beekeeper may start simply because a swarm of bees landed in his yard and he got interested in someone helping. And I know, looking back, a lot of the things that were further said in the report really don't lend themselves to the way bees work. Of course, bees have been here on this earth 15,000 years, starting in Europe, and they seem to do very well without helping the man. And the big change that have occurred is we now live in a chemical world. Bees are very susceptible to what's going on in one place to another. Merely taking a course that would be required of your ordinance really doesn't fit the life cycle of bees and the life cycle of the weather. And what I would prefer would be very helpful to get a group of beekeepers with you, because an old thought that is true is that if you have 10 beekeepers and ask them 10 questions, they could all be expert scientists, and you'll get 10 different answers, subtle ones that are very different. A typical beekeeper is 122, as Janet mentioned. 110 of them are experienced beekeepers, some of which could be available as mentors. So the whole thought of having to take a course before you decide on keeping bees just doesn't fit anybody's life anymore. It can start as simply as having a swarm in your yard, but somebody says, what are we doing? This neighborhood wants to spray it and kill it. This neighborhood said, let's get them out of here. And it only takes a phone call or two to alert someone about them. There's one other aspect of beekeeping that people who, right now, bees are in deep trouble. The annual loss in the United States has been averaging almost 40, 50 percent a year of hives, so that a new beekeeper, he probably has a 60 percent chance of losing in the year one. And I met this morning with the person, the president of the Westmoreland Beekeepers, a very active and savvy person, and she also indicated some of the changes she'd like to suggest to the person drafting, and that if you want to call additional beekeepers, I'd use that pitch in. But I think one of the other things, the doctor who asked me one time, Sean, I need something to take my mind off medicine. And I said, have you ever thought of beekeeping? And he's turned in a few years into a very savvy, experimental type of beekeeper. He keeps them out of careful danger. But bees, the latest thing that has not reached the programmable, ideal way to keep bees is the thought that we're stuck with this problem that bees are being killed now a whole lot of ways. There's a new might that has adapted its life cycle to feed, and it gets in an egg when the egg is laid a day after, and it feeds on the larvae, it feeds on the drones, so that when it's hatched, there may be four or five in the cell when the bee is hatched into one. Some of the other things that we see, we're being advised as savvy beekeeper now, just to keep the population of bees in the United States up because it pollinates a third of the food bee in the whole area of food, special, and so forth. And they say you should be planning on a 30 percent loss every year in any other field of bees. An absolute catastrophe, and beekeepers are struggling to figure out how to do it. In doing it either by swarms, by buying bees, or starting new hives from extra bees in their hive, a rule of thumb is the bees will drift back to the old hive, so you should move them two and a half miles away for two weeks. Now, Latrobe isn't even that big. Bees and examiners don't fly, they might even fly over Latrobe. Some of the things that are called nuisances, they have nothing to do with the bees that are in Latrobe, and I think that all has to be tempered. And Anne read that to me. With each passing paragraph, I was getting more nervous, more nervous. This isn't Latrobe, Pennsylvania, that is acting this way. And the bees have to be nourished because if they aren't, all of us are a killer, a rancher, and they not a food bee. Secondly, that the good that they can do is unbelievable. You need to take it into account. I can offer to whoever's writing the draft suggestions that a lot of them are good, a lot of them are fine, but there's a lot of errors where, first, they call the flyway barrier, or the, probably the Pittsburgh beekeeper thing, which is one page long. It's a flyway barrier, it's not magic, but it's, it's the everything. And again, Janet, a section where the state inspectors we have in Pennsylvania, but keep in mind that all the budgets are to follow that's going on in governments. Our state inspector, which is a very savvy lady, her whole job, she helps people, she doesn't hinder them. And in helping, you can find that she has six colonies to cover.
Right.
Westmoreland County alone is a thousand square miles, so you can see, you can't get to anybody in 48 hours to get attention. So those kinds of things, I think we're suggesting, refer them, but you give the person a year, two months, something, to get an answer back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Montresco.
My name's Scott Crowe, and I'm an expert beekeeper. Live at 809 Weldon Street with my wife and family. We own two houses on Spring Street. We keep two hives over there. And I'm not going to, I basically agree with that, what everybody else is saying, just get some input from people to keep bees. There's language in here about the city without guidance, you know, and take the hives. Doesn't make, in my opinion, it doesn't make sense that you would ever have these rights. I don't think that's the intent.
You know what? I think we were all kind of surprised, quite frankly. I mean, we just thought we were cleaning up an ordinance and putting some things in it that, you know, so I think we were all a little surprised, but I didn't even know, I mean, I live on Long Island Street, and I didn't even know that you folks have bees over there, so.
That's good, that's good.
So, you know, I think we can table this, and then we can maybe at an agenda meeting or schedule a separate meeting with those folks of you that are experts in this field, and we can talk more about it. Zach, Wayne, you guys okay with that?
Just, if you want to repeat.
For one more time?
Yeah, sure, sure. I'm sorry, but Zach?
If you wanted to do that, if you wanted to do that, we do a motion to table the ordinance and to instruct the solicitor and whomever else you want to meet with interested groups of people and report.
Yes, that's right.
You can also appoint a committee of three members to work with me on that as well, if you'd like.
Okay. I'll ask for volunteers, but go ahead. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crowe.
Thank you again.
Yes, Paul?
I certainly respect what we heard from the expert beekeepers, and I sincerely mean that expert, that this ordinance also encompasses chickens and feral cats. So perhaps maybe that should be separated from bees. Now, another thing I wanted to point out about the amendment was the fact that I found nothing in this amended ordinance that states what the penalties are for violators of this ordinance. As far as distances and armies of where chicken coops can be, I think it's not written well. But like I say, it's, I don't believe it should be all lumped together.
Okay. We can certainly take that. We can certainly take that into consideration as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the subject of bees or on anything else that's on the agenda?
I'm Jeff Leonard, but if we're going to table this, more discussion than that, I think that's our. I think paring down to some of this language will thaw a lot of the issues and reassure a lot of the people here that's concerned about that.
Are you a beekeeper?
I'm not.
Oh, okay.
But I walk around the neighborhood, and I see people who have these, and John's my neighbor, Scott's my neighbor. Actually, I had some questions relative to whether or not board had done any research about how many beekeepers there are in the city.
I don't believe we did. Zach, do you have anything you want to add?
I don't know what Ian did prior to my coming on board. I just know that there was a significant amount of interest prior to my coming on board to codify how bees are kept in the city, and that fell on me once I came on board.
Anne's on here.
She's off tonight. The other part of that, too, was the biggest issue, I think, was really chickens. That was the largest component of bees, and the feral cats came in after that.
Yeah, generally, when you're going to update one chapter of the code, you like to do it all at one point, time for efficiency. And because they do all interact, such as violations of the bee ordinance, would play into the general, overall violations of Chapter 58.
And this is why we advertise. So it's great to see you all here, and I'm sure we'll table this and have another meeting before we vote on it.
There's a number of other municipalities that have passed similar statutes. Language is more condensed and a little less overreaching, I think.
Okay.
So I'd be happy to talk with Zach about my input as to kind of some of what that model legislation is, why certain things are good, why the way it's working currently could be some problems, so.
Thank you.
I think that's a good idea, that we look at it again.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Was this advertised?
Yeah. All ordinance are advertised, my law. Yeah.
I think that's why we got so many people coming to it.
Anybody else have anything else about the agenda, on the agenda items that they want to talk about? Do we want to talk to Craig and Jeannie about Third Ward before we get to this on the agenda? Okay. One of the items on the agenda is the Third Ward Playground, Lincoln Avenue Trail. And at our agenda prep meeting, we had talked, and we had some questions, so Craig, Ms. Grant, and Jeannie, thank you so much for coming. I think I'll just open the floor up to you guys and to the council if they have any questions. But before I do that, I wanted to share with everybody something here. Just so everyone understands, everyone that knows me knows I'm a big proponent of parking wreck. And I think it's really important that our neighborhoods have recreational facilities, and the Lincoln Avenue Trail, I think everyone will agree, has been a tremendous asset to our community. But one thing that I think is really interesting, and I have a spreadsheet for the council members, but I did want to point out that with Lincoln Avenue Trail, Third Ward, and Third Ward Playground, we will have, and the DCR grants that we got, and the community support that we have, the city tax dollars, provided that we use the $25,000 for the Third Ward Playground, we will have $70,000 of city tax dollars invested in Lincoln Avenue Trail and Third Ward Playground. And for that $70,000, we will have realized $737,500 worth of improvements in the city of Latrobe. The community stepped up with $346,500, private sector, school district, 15, DCNR, 306,000. So it's less than 10 percent of the total improvements that we have that come from taxpayers' dollars, and I think that's phenomenal, and I think that's the kind of thing we want to do and need to do in the city of Latrobe. Grants money is out there, but it takes a commitment, and organizations and foundations that want to give grants to municipalities want to see the municipalities supported both financially and within kind services, and the city of Latrobe has a tremendous history of doing that, and I think that's why we are so fortunate to be successful in getting some of these grants. So I just, and I'll leave a couple of these for the general public, but I just put together a spreadsheet so that you could kind of see what the breakdown of that funding is for these two projects. So I know some folks have some questions about Third Ward Playground, so I don't know how we want to do this. Do you want to give us a little history, Jeannie first, or Craig, or do you guys just have some, want to ask your questions?
I would recommend just fielding your questions at this point, because I'm not, I'm sure the council is aware of the athletic field sale and how the grant got transferred up to Third Ward. We were fortunate to be able to move that because the scope of work in both of the facilities were very similar. They both involved a brand-new playground, they both involved a new pavilion, landscaping, you know, they're very similar. So it took about six months after we found out that the school district was purchasing the athletic field property for the construction of the new school, for DCNR to approve the change from the athletic field to Third Ward.
And if I could add something to, a little bit of history that I recall happening, at the time of the Lincoln Avenue Trail, the city had committed $35,000 in year two, and I believe at that time, the then-city manager committed to try to find money in the budget for the second year of $35,000. And then he left, so that never happened. So the trail was short, about $35,000, and so we looked at our budget to see if we could help and come up with that, and we were able to find $25,000 towards the Lincoln Avenue Trail, which we put in our budget for 2016, and that was in there. From my understanding, the private sector stepped up with a $35,000 grant to help finish Lincoln Avenue Trail. So that $25,000 for the trail wasn't needed. So then we thought, maybe we should move it, and that's what Wayne came and asked to move it from the Lincoln Avenue Trail fund to the Third Ward Trail, playground fund, so we have enough money to complete Third Ward. And that's where we are, that's where we are today. Am I forgetting anything? Can anyone?
No, that's exactly, exactly right. I have a letter from Alex Grabiany indicating that he was going to propose to council that they budget an additional 35 in year two. So we did receive the grant for Third Ward, we did receive the grant for the athletic field, both of them. But then amidst that all, the school district purchased the athletic field. So what we had to do was either come up with another $40,000 to match Third Ward, or increase the scope of work at Third Ward. It was very complicated. The difference between the two grants essentially was that we had more money budgeted for playground equipment at the athletic field than we did at Third Ward. $75,000 versus $39,000. So that's the reason why we went from an $80,000 grant to a $117,000 grant. So it's kind of complicated, but the point is, we wanted to take advantage of the whole $56,000 that DCNR gave us for this project. So that means we have to match that. And so it's like.
And it was a moving target?
Very much.
For quite some time. So we have a motion on the agenda tonight to transfer the money from the capital fund to Third Ward Playground. And the other piece to this was the lights on Lincoln Avenue Trail. The lights on Lincoln Avenue Trail were never part of the original design and grant. So, you know, when I hear people say, well, we're not done yet, from what was designed for the original first half million dollars, we have completed it. The lights came up afterwards when we found that there was a grant available from Penn Dot, I believe, to do lights. But that required a match of $18,000, which we didn't have unless we used this 25. We're talking about 10 lights along a two-mile trail, so people can use it in the dark. In my opinion, the $25,000 is much better spent, they should. In my opinion, the $25,000 is much better spent this year on Third Ward. It's a very heavily used playground for the children up in that neighborhood. And I think next year, we may be able to budget some money in the budget for the lights and perhaps get some money from the private sector to help pay for those lights and go after that grant for next year. You're up, guys.
I understand what you're saying, Jeannie, about Alex saying that he could maybe promise some money, but it never made it to this floor for us to okay that. So even Alex promising that, I know he's done that in few areas and now we're cleaning that up. So I know a lot of us on here are pro the lights on the trail. We see the, I was the biggest opponent of the trail, sitting up here. I voted no, I think, every time it came up here. But now, in hindsight, that trail is used so much. It is so, it's the biggest success during my time on council and I had no part of it. But now seeing people use that, seeing people want to use the trail, I want to improve the trail because the lights and hearing, Jerry's not here to speak about it, but he's the biggest runner, I think, in the city of Latrobe. I think everybody would agree that, they see him running, he was running as they paved it. So from my opinion, I take Jerry's advice that if there are lights on that trail, people are using it now without lights. The safety factor will improve with the lights. More people will use it at night, people that work, you know, during the day can walk at night, safety reasons. I just like the lights personally, for me.
If I may?
Yeah.
Rosie's point, I can't remember who it was, that said that there are 10 lights across a two-mile span. The design really calls for about 30 lights in order to illuminate the path correctly. We, first of all, have lost that grant because we did not finish it in time. We had, we had a very close window, so we cannot spend that money on lights at all this year. My recommendation, I think along with the rest of our committee that we've been meeting for, I don't know, three years, but on the light subject, I think we ought to go for a bigger grant. They actually, the grant I wrote was for $78,000, which only funded 10 lights. I think we should go for all 30 of the lights and do it the right way and do some fundraising and illuminate the path correctly.
And I also think it's important to point out that there is, there are streetlights on Lincoln Avenue that help with that light, help illuminate that path. But typically, when you're talking about recreational playgrounds or parks or things like that, you know, a lot of times they close at dusk. And I don't know, in my opinion, I'd rather see the money goes for kids than a handful of people that want to run on the path at night. I just think it's a better bang for our buck. And then go after, as Jeannie says, a bigger, a bigger grant for, to all the lights, for more lights. Because 10 lights long two miles isn't going to help much.
Right. Really what we're asking for is, here you can finish a project with 25. Here, if you're not even, we're going to get a project started. And we also missed the window for this year, so.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Has anybody else been approached for this $25,000 that's in the school district? The reason why I'm saying this is this. We satisfied our party off with the money and in-kind services. After the $200,000 was given to Park and Rec, I know a lot of us took a lot of flak for that. And I understand why we did that. It's a good reason for the equipment. But now, after I did that, I told people I wouldn't vote for any more money for Park and Rec this year. And here we are, many months later.
This was in the budget, Jack?
I don't understand it.
It was in the budget?
This is what I'm saying, this is my opinion.
Mine too.
And that's where I'm at with right now. A very hard decision to make, but I don't know if I can do it right now.
Well, the $200,000 was given to the city, that's school district funding. It's to the city, but it's school district funding.
Right, I understand.
And $25,000 is budgeted. And that budget was for playground improvements.
And we...
Under the function of lights?
Yeah.
No, no, it was never lights. There was never lights discussed in the budget last year. When we voted on this budget in December of 2015, we never talked about lights on the trail. The lights came up this year.
The lights came up this year, the application to Penn Don to support like that $72,000 grant that matched like $2,000. We found that out late in the cycle. That second year cycle is over and it won't happen again until 2017, which is another budget year. Gives council if they prefer lights, gives the opportunity to budget that for next year. We're talking about this year for the finished Third Ward Playground. And what is the result of this? We've got over a half a million dollars on the trail. And that's DCR funding. We've been blessed by Jeannie and Craig's expertise to move funding from the old athletic field to Third Ward Playground. That's difficult to do with DCR. They could have said, forget it, we're not going to do that. They moved those funds to Third Ward Playground. We have the opportunity to finish a playground at Third Ward, which is supported by at least three of our neighborhoods in the second, third and fourth wards. The other beautiful thing about this is, we have a $25 million Latrobe Elementary School going up to go athletic field. So it's a win-win-win for everybody. And all we're asking is, the council to follow through with the budget of $25,000. The times change. And when we seek grants, we seek private funding to support the districts. And how is that accomplished? From the private sector has to come through, or the city, or the school district. And we are counting on the $35,000 from the city to do that.
Going back to my original question, is there anybody else been approached as in school district?
We're counting on the 25 to the city. You can see the, in your printout, what the private sector community has contributed to the recreational program of this city. And I believe, I believe it's 46 or 47% of the total project.
47% of... 47% of the total project came from the community.
And those dollars are?
$346,500. I think the issue, I think the problem with the school district is just like us, when we do a budget, they're in a budget, you know, they have a budget that they have to maintain. And so to go and ask for that now, when they're in the middle of their budget cycle, that's, you know, that's always a problem. We may be able to do that next year when they're budgeting, if we want to have maybe some help somewhere along the way. But as we said, we did budget this in the 2016. Now, Jack, obviously, I know you weren't on council to vote for that budget, but the prior council did vote for that budget with this $25,000 in there. So.
Can I ask one question that we had at the agenda prep meeting? We asked how a project gets started without, without having the end game with banking on money that is not, not there, just hoping that it's given. I'm just curious.
There are various ways to do that. For example, what happened with city council, we were, we were basically counting on $70,000 and ended up with 35. There are, in the past, there have been pledges. And the process is, we don't, we don't know whether the funding is going to be available from the state. That process begins probably November, December of the year. Then when funding becomes available and grants are applied for in April, we are never notified of those grants. It's supposed to be in October. It never happens until January, February of the following year. What's happened in the past is, we've sought pledges and private funding oftentimes has, as everybody, it only has so many dollars. And when DCR turns us down, some of the funding sources say to us, we were counting on that grant, we have not funded other initiatives, and now you're telling us DCR must have the grant? But we are counting on funding that support. So it's a cross section of funding and the private sector, here's before, from all the recreational facilities you see, we find the funding.
You know, I have to say this because Jim will, he'll laugh once he hears this, but I apply for a grant, a DCR grant, every year, or have when I was director. Unfortunately, we've never not received one. So I call Jim once I get notified. Like you said, I applied for it in April. The commission approves it, of course, and endorses it. I try to seek, you know, the funding and have to provide a match. So anyways, I write the grant in April, I don't find out May, June, July, December, maybe January. So nine months later, I call Jim and I say, and of course, the foundations have been extremely, I mean, supportive in all of our park development. Call him up and say, Jim, I just found out we got the grant. Congratulations. Oh, shit.
You go find the money.
Excuse my language, but that's pretty much what he said. Now we have to find the money. So then we, so we go and scratch and, you know, like this Third Ward, we got almost $12,000 worth of in-kind services in order to complete this grant. So it's congratulations, oh my God, now I have to go, I have to go find the money. And that's kind of how DCR works. We never know if we're going to get the grant. You get the grant, I'll find the money. And that's kind of how it works.
And if you don't find the money, you lose the grant, you give it back.
We've never lost the grant.
And it's not unusual, I mean, this is pretty much, from the way I understand it, this is pretty much how it operates. And we've been so fortunate in the city of Latrobe that people always step up and the city has always stepped up and done a portion of it. And I just think it's tremendous to have $737,000 worth of improvements for less than 10% of taxpayers' dollars. I mean, you know, it's the same thing I've said before. If I say to you, I'm going to give you $20, or you give me $20 and I'll give you whatever the math is, 100 back, 40 back, 60 back, you take that deal.
Well, beauty of this community, security of this community is our neighborhood playground. They've been here forever. I've used them, all our kids use them. And now it's time to revitalize. The path is new. We're still working through some of the glitches of the path. We have got a tremendous amount of time to put the lights there. The mayor mentioned, really the dark parts of the path are from Racers to McDonald's. Why? Dairy Township doesn't have any streetlights on their side of Lincoln Avenue. Once you hit McDonald's, there are streetlights, the whole way along, we can have it all the way out to Wyssens. And each cross section has lights. Every street has lights. We and the Philly Rogers Foundation have been instrumental in improving the playgrounds and something that Fred Rogers said. If you've got a nice, quality, safe playground, you'll have a nice neighborhood. And if you have a nice neighborhood, you have a nice community. And that's why the private sector supports playgrounds. And we're just asking for the $25,000 from the city to link this $740,000 up.
I think that my major concern is not, it's not a matter of the lights or the playground, one dial or the other out. They're both needed. That's not a concern. But typically, when you enter into a project, and I understand exactly what you're saying, you get a grant, you have to have matching funds, but you don't typically start the project until you have the money. And that's where I'm concerned, because I don't want to start a precedent. The money we've never voted on, so therefore, we never approved this money for this second year.
You are so right. Here's what, here's what happened. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, and that's my interest too, where I live. So, yeah, I don't want to see it sitting the way it's sitting now. And I, there are tons of kids up there. So we do need it. And, but that's a big concern for me.
Would you like one?
Park and Rec, or that, who else? Went forward without having the money at hand. It's a lot of money.
We really didn't do that, you know. Here's what happened. We had a meeting, we got the grant for the athletic field, $56,000. So we had to come up with our own $56,000 match. We ordered the equipment. It was to be delivered in July of 2015 and the project was to be completed by mid-August. In June, the school district called me and asked for a meeting and said that they had intended on purchasing the athletic field, that they had made their decision that if they can enter into an agreement with the city, they're going to purchase. I called my playground manufacturer. The playground equipment slated for the athletic field was on the boat from Denmark. There was no way to stop it. We already purchased it. So I had to use it. I couldn't use it at the athletic field. So that's when I started to work with DCR to try and ask them to change the element, enhance the scope of work at Third Ward and allow us to place that equipment. So 48,000, $42,000 worth of playground equipment was already purchased on a boat from Denmark when I talked to the school district in June.
The other thing I want to mention too is that the $25,000 that's in the budget, we voted on because it was in the budget when we voted for the budget. So we approved that budget with that $25,000 in there. At the time, we thought it was going to be for Lincoln Avenue Trail. So that money was budgeted for the trail and we voted on that budget. So it was voted on. The difference now is we're moving it, is we're asking to move it from one recreation program to another.
That's not what we voted on when we did the budget. I understand you're saying it's in the budget, it's there, but when we voted on the budget, it was for the Lincoln Avenue Trail. So that's why we're all having a hard time voting for it just to be transferred over to Third Ward, because when we voted on the budget, it was for that.
Right. But at that time, we, there was more, but, but the trail project was able to get another grant to cover the trail, so the $25,000 was no longer needed to complete the trail. So, you know, if no one would have ever brought the lights up, we would have never, you know, I mean, the lights came out at a later date. So, I mean, we'll just have to, we'll just vote.
It's a simple matter of priority to me. Playground is a priority. The lights on the trail, to me, are not a priority. Now, playground needs to be finished. I support $25,000 to help finish that playground. You're also, you were talking earlier too about, you know, parks property typically closes at dark. And so now you're going to light the trail and say, what, that you're changing, you're changing the policy, you want people out there now after dark? You have to change that policy, change the way that it's monitored. You got, you got a perfectly good playground there that needs to be finished so those kids can use it.
I have a question too. A councilman likes to run, likes to run at night, but approves the money for the city to light the path when there are hundreds of neighbors of kids that utilize those funds for that purpose. It seems to be a little self-serving.
Well, yeah, we can't speak for Jerry because Jerry's not here.
I mean, I'm not saying Jerry's the only one that was bad at running. I'm saying that I would take his advice because I don't run. I do walk my kids on that trail. I use all the playgrounds and park options. I use Park and Rec. I have two kids that utilize all that stuff. I'm very pro parks. I'm just saying that we have to do what we tell people as elected officials. So as we voted on a budget, we told them that there's going to be $25,000 for parks, for the trail. And then we say, okay, we're going to change our mind. We've got to really think about that.
That's not what we did, Trisha. You're spewing the fact. We said the lights were never part of the trail. We finished the trail. We made our commitment. We finished our commitment. We said we were going to, this was the scope of the trail. And the only reason we have $25,000 left is because, you know, we had a private sector person come in and meet that grant. Instead, maybe that private sector person could have done the playground. But at that time, they come in with money and they finished the grant. That's the only reason why we have that money left. So to say that we're not doing what we said we were going to do is not true. We did what we said we were going to do. We completed the trail. And I got to tell you, and you're absolutely right, the pressure we took, some of us that were pro-trail, on that trail was unbelievable, similar to what we're, you know, what we hear now. And now it's, you know, everybody thinks it's the greatest thing since sliced bread, and it is. So, I mean, I guess we beat this thing to death and we'll just move on and we'll see how the vote goes. Do you have something you want to add?
Well, I just think it's a bad practice by Park and Rec to go out and apply for grants before they now have the matching money.
That's not what happened. Jeannie just told you that.
Jeannie just said that's what happens all the time. Every year she applies for a grant, then, oh, we got a grant, we got to go out and look for the money.
And that's not what she said.
I know when we apply for our grants through fire department, something for company one applies for that grant. What we put in for, we got to make sure that we have that money to match that grant. Company two does it, Jack, we'll tell you that. We all do that. You never apply for a grant until you're for sure you got that money to match it. And then come back and say, hey, by the way, council, we applied for this grant, we need this money.
This isn't what happened. And what happened in this case is because of the switch, because of the purchase, there was enough money to do the athletic field. With the $10,000 that the city was giving them, that would have been it. It was because of the sale and because of the transfer. And I guess what I struggle with is, is we've got this money. And, yes, Craig?
Yeah, honestly, what we're asking council is, there is $25,000 budgeted. We finished the trail on the private sector's side, not using that money. All we're asking now...
All we're asking now, transfer that money over to Third Ward, so now you have two completed projects of the scope of the work. That's all we're asking. And again, that's 9% of those two projects.
So Craig, what you're saying is, we go ahead and okay this tonight, when it comes to lights on the trail, council's not gonna have to worry about that? Any type of money for that?
We're not saying that. We're saying if you're interested in lighting the trail, that's two separate issues. That $25,000 in your budget wasn't for any lights. We were trying to go above and beyond that project, okay? When this grant came up, we thought we could get it done, get some lights on there. That failed, then we didn't go through. So we're asking the $25,000 that you guys were gonna put into building the trail, not anything with the lights. We're asking you, since the private sector stepped up, took care of the trail, we're asking you to slide it over so we can get Third Ward done for those residents up there.
The fact that the trail was finished, I think frees us to use that money in another place. So like, for those of you who are, like, you're worried about our constituents, that the trail's finished, like, I think consciously, you can, you can feel free to then, I could go with parks.
Yeah, and if you go with lights in the future, like Jeanie said, you go ahead and write a grant, if the city wants to be a part of that, then we move forward with that.
I think we need to explore that.
Yes.
I just wanna make a quick comment. Having worked with the municipal authority for the last eight years, and dealing with DCNR as much as I did, they're nothing but a big PIA. And the fact that they were able to get that grant money switched from one place to another, they should be applauded. And you should take that into consideration, because it is miraculous what they did. You can't get DCNR to budge on anything, trust me.
I also think we need to really talk about and discuss this whole lighting issue along Lincoln Avenue Trail with the chief, and have more of a discussion about, you know, what that whole entail, and make sure that's the direction that we want to go, to encourage people to be there at night. So that's a whole nother thing that I need, I think should not be a quick decision.
Craig, I just have two other questions. Number one is, okay, so we got a start as the playground equipment arrived here, would there have been any way possible to have stored that equipment and delay the start of the project until all money was in here? Or was that not possible?
Well, that playground movement was for almost a year.
Almost a year.
About wait.
So we just tried to be proactive when the school bought that piece of property to slide over so we can actually get another facility done with, like Jeanie said, with that, what did DCNR already approve to give us?
Did you have like a window of when the project had to get started to get that money to be...
Generally, DCNR gives three years to complete a project. And I wrote this grant in '14, so I was coming up on, you know, closing that up.
Young Mr. Leonard, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I did, actually. Thank you. My name's Chris Leonard, I'm a constituent, resident here in Latrobe, 2513, Lincoln Ear Street. Just got curious, even listening, I'm, this is a layman. $25,000 that was previously budgeted and approved and passed by council for a market renovation of park, sounds like it would be best served for a project that is incomplete and that would, you know, provide services and entertainment to children in the area, as opposed to being spent to, I guess, an incomplete lighting project. And that's just kind of my layman approach to thinking about this.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Question over here, I'm sorry, one left.
Am I allowed to make...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand.
That's okay. I apologize. My name's Annie Amatucci. I live next to the playground. We relate, because I had to pull these guys away from the school picnic, so. But we're here, because it was important enough, I wanted them to see that if our community is gonna be what it needs to be, we need to support it, and I agree with you. I just ask, when you're taking your vote, to think about this piles of mud and the big fence that they can't get past to play on. And to think about the community as a whole, we're trying to bring young families in. Young families aren't gonna wanna buy a house, and the path is a beautiful, beautiful addition to bring young families in, but that playground right now is not completed. It absolutely will be. That's why we've spent money adding on to our house and staying in this community, raising our kids in this community. So I just think you really need to take that into consideration of that incomplete project, because it's just not, right now, it's not appealing. And it can be, and it's beautiful, and we support it, but it just needs to be done.
Again, I said this last week, maybe Friday after the meeting. So you're gonna ask these kids to cross Lincoln Ear Street, busy roads, to have to go down to Leesian Keener to play, because they don't have a place to play close to them. Again, it doesn't sit well for me. It's a safety issue, just so some adults can run at night. I love to run, you know, I would maybe challenge that claim of Jerry's. Maybe we can have a footrace or something. But I like to run too, but, you know, not at the cost of the park.
Yes. Last comment, then, we'll move on.
Thank you. As a, sorry, young family, I moved back to Pittsburgh to raise a family here, family Latrobe, and proud to say that. And having grown up in Third Ward and on Third Ward Playground, I can tell you that it is a significant deterioration from where it had been. And quite frankly, I drove by there the other day, this guy shook my head and said, man, it would be, you know, it would be a great improvement to build great, my children to where I grew up on the playground, and have them play there in a nice, safe, you know, clean environment. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports. Finance Committee, Julie and me. Public Safety, Eric, Julie, Stuck, any, anything?
No, we were supposed to have a meeting, but Mike was there, and nobody else, I don't think.
Personnel Committee, Tricia, Jack, anything?
Anything.
Health Insurance, I think we worked all that out. So that committee's kind of now over, right?
Yep. Unless you'd like to continue.
No, that's been enough. Events Committee, Jerry, Tricia, Jack, anything?
Just that Bringing Fred Home was, I think, a huge success, and everyone who participated in that, to get it together, did a wonderful job.
Here, here. Parking Committee?
Trying to get it together with Marty.
Okay. I know how that is. Student Showcase Committee, we need to get moving on that. Julie and Tricia, Jack, are we gonna maybe try to schedule a meeting for next month, maybe?
We can do that with the school district right away?
Well, I think what we need to do is kind of come up with the criteria, and then once we have it, maybe one of the committee members could go to the school board meeting to present what we have in mind, and I was thinking, you know, I don't know, whatever you guys think. You guys, you're an educator, I thought you would be good at that, basically, do an set the guidelines, who wanna do something once a quarter, where we showcase this to ... Okay? Board and Authority Reports, I don't think there are, there's anything, anyone here from any of the boards? Department Reports, how it works, Mike?
Nothing to report there.
Chief Umar?
I just wanted to compliment the street department, also the First Ward Firemen and their volunteers for the fair. They did a great job, and also the Bringing Fred Home Celebration, the street department had everything laid out properly. It went off without a hitch, and I just want to compliment the services and the volunteers of the city.
And our police department as well, for this, for all of those things. Chief Presley's not here, he owns out today. Okay, Mr. Kanzler, you're up.
First up was to be, to enact an ordinance regulating the keeping of chickens and bees. It appears that that's going to, that it might be appropriate, at this point, to make a motion to table that ordinance and to authorize the solicitor to communicate with the public regarding updates to the ordinance upgrade.
Can I have a motion to table the ordinance and authorize the city solicitor to meet with beekeepers and maybe a couple people wanna volunteer on council or work on that committee with that, on the ordinance? Can I have a motion to table that?
I'll make that motion.
Next second.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm probably out of like, order here, but does anybody wanna volunteer to work on that with Zach?
I'm worried if you could meet me, isn't it?
Jack and Julie?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then will we be able to have it, citizens?
Yes, yes. That, we'll do it in the evening, it'll be easier for residents to come to. Wayne?
So we need to get some contact information from the people that are here.
Yes, don't leave beekeepers and beekeeper enthusiasts, okay? We'll get your name and address so we can schedule something. Go ahead, Zach.
I also suggest a motion to segregate the bees provisions and that ordinance from the chickens, feral cats and kenneling.
And who said the cats? You need to get a little closer to your mic.
To segregate the chickens, feral cats and kenneling from the bees, and have a separate ordinance for those items, and making a motion to authorize me to segregate those items and re-note that.
Yeah, can I have a motion to do exactly what Zach just said?
I'll make a motion to segregate those sub-items. The question, do we need to now have our chicken enthusiasts come in for a...
We don't need them.
Feral cabin doozies.
Feral cats. We'll have for time, so we'll move. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Next on the agenda is Administration and Finance Department. The next item is a motion regarding the Public Works Director. The motion would be to appoint Michael Ray on the recommendation of the city manager as the director of the Public Works Department, with an annual salary of $50,000 per year effective June 1 of 2016. The appropriate action would be to make a motion, as read by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution as read by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussions? Ms. Buck? A motion, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
For those of you that haven't seen him, this is Michael Ray, the director of Public Works.
All right, next item on the agenda was the motion for the transfer of the Lincoln Trail funds. The motion as prepared was to authorize the funding in the amount of $25,000 initially budgeted for the Parks and Recreation Commission to utilize on the Lincoln Avenue Trail to be instead utilized by the Park and Recreation Commission on the Third Ward Playground Restoration Project.
Is this a motion?
No, this is a motion.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve authorized funding in the amount of $25,000 to the Parks and Recreation Commission to utilize on, I'm sorry.
Third Ward.
The Third Ward.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
May I say one thing, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
In the future, please come to the city with the exact amount you're gonna need, so we don't have to make these tough decisions again.
Thank you. Go on, Zach.
Next item on the agenda is the motion for the garbage rate increase. This motion would be to authorize the preparation and notice of an ordinance increasing the residential and commercial solid waste collection rates by $2 per month.
May I have a motion? I know no one wants to do this, but I'm afraid we're gonna have to.
I'll make the motion.
At it, girl. You're a strong woman. May I have a second, please?
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Reluctantly?
Reluctantly.
Any questions or discussions? Is this a motion too, Jack?
Yes.
What's a motion, then? Yes, question?
Do we know what the future is on an increase in all of this? Is this gonna be a ten-year?
No, this should keep you, should make you hold for the next 18 months.
And then the contract off?
Right.
And then we have to renegotiate the garbage contract.
You should, you should be good for the rest of this contract.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is with regard to healthcare. This, again, is a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a new healthcare agreement with UPMC based upon the explanation of the contract and recommendation of the city manager.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussions? I'll just add that Julie and I had met with Wayne and representatives from the FOP and ASME, and we greatly appreciate their willingness to work with us so that we didn't have to bear the huge increase that we would've had to bear. But it's a good program, and we were able to keep their, to keep their healthcare costs pretty much the same, with just some administrative changes, so.
This worked from, basically, it's 17, I think, from burn recovery, to about a 3% increase.
Yeah, it was a 17% increase that we were able to reduce to a 3% increase.
Still an increase, but nevertheless, a lot smaller.
Right, and, and the benefits to the employees have not changed. It's just the way we can administer it, so. Thank you to both, to all the city employees for their cooperation on that.
Which, by the way, is also a plus to the budget. So next time somebody asks us if we're anything over budget or under budget, we can say we're ahead of the budget.
We're under budget on healthcare.
Next month.
Because we budgeted more for it.
Yeah. Next month, we're gonna say we're still 14% ahead.
Any other, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is with regard to the SG2 Realty Tax Appeal. The motion to take at this point would be to authorize the city solicitor to execute the joint petition and stipulation of settlement in the tax assessment appeal doctored at 6134 of 2015 with the Westmoreland County Court on the lease.
May I have a motion to do what Zach said?
Make a motion to do what Zach said.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussions?
I'd just like to reiterate to council that this will be increasing the tax basis of the property subject to this tax appeal to put it in line with the fair market value of the parcel, which is a substantial increase.
And this was something that this came up through. Do you wanna remind everybody what this was?
Yes, the school district filed a number of appeals at the end of the calendar year last year, four of which were within the city's jurisdiction, so we were party, as an interested party, to the action, and they saw an increase which they were able to negotiate, and we have to approve of that as well.
And for those of you that, we discuss a lot of these things at our Agenda Prep session, so we kind of know that we have the fourth Monday of every month, so we kind of have a lot of detail about that, so that when it comes to the floor, council's pretty much familiar with it, so. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is the reissuance of the 2012 General Obligation Bond. The motion would be to authorize the city manager to retain Janine Capital Markets for the reissuance of the 2012 General Obligation Bond.
May I have a motion to authorize the city manager to contact Janine Capital for reissuance of the bonds?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. May I have a second, please?
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Porish. Any questions or discussion?
Can I jump in again? Just once again, I was gonna say, $230,000.
Yeah.
It's good for the city.
Yeah, good work, Wayne.
I wasn't looking for that, but I would say, it's good for the city.
Well, but you deserve it, because it's $230,000 savings for the city over the length of the...
I'm fighting for $10, so $230,000 is great. Keep looking, buddy.
Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is authorization of the filing of the cost allocation agreement and the addendum for the Act 537 Plan. This item is a resolution, I'll summarize the resolution. When we, when the city approved the cost allocation agreement and the addendum to the cost allocation agreement to remediate any issues with the Act 537 Plan update for the story system of the city, all of the municipal entities determined that it would be most appropriate for the original document to be filed with the county recorder deeds office, so it's available for public review by any person freely. Also, then one organization is responsible for carrying the document. So this resolution authorizes the Latrobe Municipal Authority to file the original document with recorder deeds for the county.
Okay, may I have a motion please to authorize the filing of the cost allocation agreement for the 537 Plan?
Ms. Buck, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions? All in favor? Oh, it's a resolution. Ms. Buck? Oh, you said motion.
I said motion.
Oh, you asked for a motion, but we need a resolution, okay. Go ahead, Barbara.
This is Resolution 2016-28. Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
Mrs. Vogelbrager?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
There's six yes.
All right, now we'll be moving on to the police department. This item is a resolution and it will remove a handicap parking space on West Harrison Avenue and establish a handicap parking space on Miller Street, just a brief summation. Jacob Amundt had a handicap parking space at his former residence located at 12 West Harrison Avenue. He's moved and requested that his handicap parking space follow him to his new Miller Street address. This resolution would terminate his old handicap parking space and create a new one at his current residence. The appropriate action would be to make a motion to approve the resolutions read by the solicitor.
Thank you, Zach. May I have a motion to approve the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2016-29. Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
Mrs. Vogelbrager?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
There's six yes.
Next item on the agenda is a motion regarding the drug task force in the police department. This motion would be to authorize the police department to purchase drug task force equipment and seek reimbursement, reimbursement for said equipment from the Pennsylvania Attorney General's office.
May I have a motion please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Murph, may I have a second? Thank you. Any questions?
Is this, is this the one that we talked about last time that they've always, already been reimbursed for this all along?
I think, we get reimbursed for this, correct, Chief?
Right, yeah, there's the state attorney general's fiscal year, what they have left over that we use for equipment purchase, but we front the money and then they reimburse us.
Just so we don't get into another one, we're going to seek the reimbursement and then we get upset that, that reimbursement's already come, right? You are.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we'll move on to the public works department. This item is a motion. It's a motion to authorize the city engineer, Gibson Thomas Engineering, to submit the calendar year 2017 CVBG paving application.
May I have a motion to authorize Gibson Thomas to submit the 2017 CVBG paving application?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Mrs. Vogelbrager. Any questions or discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else, Zach?
I'm done, but I can give you something.
Oh, no, really? You have something else on your mind?
Every day.
On, under unfinished business?
I'll understand.
Okay. Any unfinished business from the members of council or from the city manager?
One thing, Rosie.
Yes?
Our trucks coming along, did we order them yet?
We're going to talk about it at the agenda meeting. We do have a demo, I don't remember now, but we have a demo that we can purchase once, as long as council's approval, we'll definitely take it. No, we can take it up as soon as we, we've already applied, so we'd like to talk to council about. We're ahead.
Anything else under new business?
I just want to say, it just came to my, you know, we talked about the welcome home friend, I don't want to overlook and thank all the people who participated and volunteered for the late delight that also has taken place in some of our meetings. Just how successful that seems to be.
Absolutely, thank you for bringing that up. Anything else under new business? This is our portion of the meeting where we have an open forum, but I kind of think we sort of had an open forum. But if anyone else, if anyone, anything else they want to say about anything else, now's the time. Okay, anyone? Going once, going twice? City managers report, Wayne?
Just one item. We advertised a sweet sweeper, street sweeper, street sweeper on mini bid and the street sweeper that we affectionately call Big Ben was purchased for $24.
But we named it!
It's always been called Big Ben.
I did bump into that.
But anyway, we've got a bit of bid that's going to be sold for $24.
I have a few things under the mayor's report, I know it's been a long meeting, but I would remiss, we would be remiss as a city not to recognize the tremendous losses that we've encountered recently in the city of Latrobe. I have three proclamations I would like to read, and then we will get these proclamations to, to the families. The first is a proclamation honoring Dow Carnahan, whereas Dow E. Carnahan, age 57, 56, passed away unexpectedly on Friday, April 29, 2016. Dow was a lifelong resident of the Latrobe area, having attended Derry Area High School and graduating in 1982 from Westminster College. And whereas his great passion and life revolved around radio announcing and sports. For over 30 years, he served numerous roles for the WCNS radio station in Latrobe, including morning news anchor, talk show host and operations manager. And whereas Dow was also the voice of the Latrobe Wildcats and basketball teams, the St. Vincent Bearcats football and basketball teams. And whereas he expanded his radio career by announcing auto racing at the Motordrome Speedway in Smithton and Larnerville Speedway and Pittsburgh's Motor Speedway for over 27 years. And whereas Dow was inducted into the Pittsburgh Circle Track Club Hall of Fame and was recognized by the Pennsylvania Association of Broadcasters for outstanding radio sports coverage. Now therefore, on behalf of the mayor, city council and the citizens of Latrobe, the city of Latrobe hereby recognizes Dow E. Carnahan as a true ambassador for the city of Latrobe, who put forth our best light through his radio announcing. We are grateful and thankful for his passion and dedication in presenting sporting events over the airways to those who could not always be in attendance. His knowledge and understanding of sports events and his colorful commentary provided many smiles to sports enthusiasts throughout the community. We extend our heartfelt condolences to the family of Dow Carnahan, who will be missed by our community. As sports enthusiast Urban S. Cobb once said, quote, "As I understand it, sport is hard work for which you do not get paid," end quote. For Dow Carnahan, working in sports and getting paid to do it was a dream sought by many, but experienced by a very few. This proclamation is issued under the great seal of the city of Latrobe this 13th day of June 2016. The second proclamation I'd like, I would like to read is a proclamation honoring Harry C. Latanzio. Whereas the Latrobe icon Harry C. Latanzio is now bringing music to the angels, having departed this world on May 14, 2016. And whereas in 1941, at the tender age of 19, Harry opened the Skate Land at the corner of Depot and Jefferson Streets in Latrobe. Except for a brief time serving in the Army during World War II, Harry was involved with music for his entire life. And whereas, Harry changed the name of Skate Land to Harry's Dance Land, and for many decades thereafter brought famous entertainment to Latrobe's doorstep, being dubbed the Dick Clark of Western Pennsylvania. And whereas such notable figures in the music industry as the Glenn Miller Orchestra, Frankie Avalon, Dionne Warwick, Chubby Checker, Paul Anka, Fabian and many other prominent stars brought their musical talents to our local residents as a result of Harry's endeavors. And whereas Dance Land, later renamed several times, was not only a place to listen to artists of the time, but also a place where many young men and women met, danced, fell in love and married. And whereas, due to his civic service and contributions to our community, Latrobe City Council declared May 15 to be Harry Latanzio Day. And whereas his contributions to our community has earned him our much deserved gratitude and respect. Now therefore, on behalf of the mayor, city council and the citizens of Latrobe, the city of Latrobe hereby recognizes Harry C. Latanzio as an ambassador for music for all generations and for the happiness he has brought to many. We extend our condolences to the family of Harry C. Latanzio for their loss, a loss shared by the city of Latrobe. Composer Camille Saint-Sans once said that, quote, "I produce music as an apple tree produces apples," end quote. Harry Latanzio was a virtual orchard of apple trees for the music he brought to Latrobe. This proclamation is issued under the great seal of the city of Latrobe this 13th day of June 2016. And last, but certainly not least, a proclamation honoring Mary A. Stancula. Whereas a lifelong resident of the city of Latrobe, Mary A. Stancula passed away April 11, 2016 at the age of 83, surrounded by her husband and loving family. And whereas Mary was a treasured asset to our community, she would end her answering machine message with "Now go out and make someone happy," reflecting Mary's joyful and positive outlook on life. Whereas her devotion was to her husband and family, being the mother of seven, grandmother of 18 and great grandmother of three, spreading her love and happiness at the gatherings at her home and the family farm where she prepared many meals to their delight. Whereas Mary also found a time to be generous to her community by her endeavors of civic and patriotic service. Whereas Mary was a member of St. Bartholomew's Parish in Crabtree where she expressed, expressed her deep spiritual beliefs as the director of the Latrobe Interfaith Fourth of July Program throughout the years. Mary also enjoyed singing and participating as a member of the Greater Latrobe Community Choir. Now therefore, on behalf of the mayor, city council and the citizens of Latrobe, the city of Latrobe hereby expresses its deepest condolences to the family of Mary Stancula for their loss, a loss not only to them, but also to the citizens of our community. Our thanks and gratitude go out to Mary for all that she has meant to our community and for the love and joy she spread throughout her lifetime. Quote, "The secret of happiness is this: Let your interests be as wide as possible. Let your reactions to the things and persons that interest you be as far as possible friendly rather than hostile," end quote, philosopher Bertrand Russell. The breadth of Mary's community interest was great, and to those who shared her interests, she was exceedingly friendly. This proclamation is issued under the great seal of the city of Latrobe this 13th day of June 2016. And that's enough. We've lost way too many friends of the city of Latrobe over the last few months, so I hope I want to do another one of those for a very long time. Couple other things, as Councilman Bartels mentioned, Relay for Life was a tremendous success. Our thanks to all of those people that participated and the great people that donated their time to the fire department, to the police department, to the city works department. You guys do a great job every day, but boy would these events come into town, you really step it up, so thank you for that. We had the pleasure tonight to participate in a meeting with Gibson Thomas Engineering where they showed us around, and we got a good view of their facilities and what they do in this, in this whole region. They're celebrating their 100th anniversary, so we want to congratulate them and thank them for being such an integral part of downtown Latrobe. They work all over the state, they could be just about anywhere, but they choose to make their home in Latrobe, and we are grateful for that and all the work that they have done and the time and commitment they spend in our community. The last thing I want to mention, and certainly not, not last, but the Mr. Rogers event was phenomenal, and Mr. Okunak is here, and I just want to commend you on such a tremendous celebration. It was so much fun and so exciting, and it's just, it's just a great place to be. Latrobe's a great place to be. And there's always wonderful things going on here, and there's just going to be more to come, so thank you, Mr. Okunak, and for all that the foundations do for the city of Latrobe, thank you. And last but not least, very last but not least, our very own Zach Kanzler just had, well, his wife just had a brand new baby. He is now a father of a little baby boy named Finley. He's what, two, two weeks old, three weeks old?
Almost three.
Almost three weeks old. So let's congratulate Zach on the birth of his first child. All right, I don't think I have anything else. Does anybody else have anything else? Yes, Chief?
I'd just like, Jim, to remember the tragedy in Orlando, the families and the victims of the terrorist attack, the police keep them in their thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Jim, that's, that's certainly something I should, we should have thought of, I should have thought of at the beginning of the moment or something, but you're absolutely right, it's a terrible tragedy, and we need to keep all of those families in our thoughts and prayers.
And continued support for our first responders who show up on those scenes.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that.
You have a second please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.